Annual joint virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole and the Capital Long Range Improvement Committee, also known as CLIC. Today is Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. My name is Alyssa Olson and I am the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota statutes, Section 13D dot zero two one, due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll to verify a quorum?
Commissioner Asmiley contacted us to say she'll be absent for this evening's meeting. Commissioner Baxley.
Present.
Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Forge.
Here.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner McGuire. Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweezy.
Here.
That's five members present.
All right, and that is a quorum. Next, we'll proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. Planning Commissioners, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sweezy, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
Meyer, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Caprini.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner McGuire. Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweezy.
All right.
That's five ayes and zero nays.
All right, that motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2021. Commissioners, can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Forge, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Second, Meyer.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Forge.
Ayes.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner McGuire. Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweezy.
Ayes.
That's five ayes and zero nays.
All right, that motion passes. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeffrey Strand, the Chair of the Capital Long Range Improvement Committee, so that they can convene their meeting as well.
Thank you, Commissioner and Vice President. So the clerk has already noted the meeting is being recorded and the regular meeting of the Capital Long Range Improvements Committee will now begin. Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Strand, I'm the Chair of the Capital Long Range Improvements Committee. And before we begin, I'd like to note that this meeting includes the remote participation of members as authorized under Minnesota statutes, Section 13D point zero two one, due to the declared local health pandemic. I will now call this clerk meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of a quorum, which appears to be present.
Very gladly, Jeff, I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Apologies for any background noise I may have going on while I do so. Thorbjorn Adam.
Present.
Coria Aiden.
Jocelyn Beard.
Present.
John Bernstein.
Here.
Brandt.
Here.
Ames Brown.
Luke Cunningham.
Sanha Degarmo.
Scott Engel.
Amity Foster.
Here.
Kai Goodmanstad.
Here.
William Gullison.
Risa Husted.
Here.
Katie Jones.
Here, and I also want to say I saw Amity is here, she may have just not been able to unmute.
No, I just hit the wrong button, I'm present.
Thank you for that. Amity, I've noted you as present. Let's see, Matt Kuzinka. Richard LaRoe.
Here.
Erica Mauder.
Here.
Anne McConnell. Jake McCormick. Dan Miller.
Here.
George Montague. Beth Toso.
Here.
Pod Schuman. Katrina Stratten. Eric Wan.
Present.
Vice Chair Willie Bridges. Chair Jeff Strand.
Present.
One moment while I tally. Okay, I count 16 members present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With that, we have a quorum present. Thank you, so with that, we'll proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, or LIMS, which is available at L I M S dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. So apparently, we then adopt the CLIC agenda, and so if a member would move it and indicate your name when doing so, and similarly with the seconder.
So moved, Bernstein.
Willie Bridges, second.
So we have a motion to adopt the CLIC agenda, properly moved and seconded. Would the clerk call the roll on that matter?
Thorbjorn Adam.
Aye.
Jocelyn Beard.
Aye.
John Bernstein.
Aye.
Brandt.
Aye.
Amity Foster.
Aye.
Eamon Gallagher.
Aye.
Kai Goodmanstad.
Aye.
Risa Husted.
Aye.
Katie Jones.
Aye.
Richard LaRoe.
Aye.
Erica Mauder.
Aye.
Ann Miller. Beth Toso.
Aye.
Eric Wan. Vice Chair Willie Bridges.
Aye.
Chair Jeff Strand.
Both, aye.
At this time, I do want to pause and see if there are any members I've missed. I saw somebody just able to join the meeting.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Engel. So with that, I count 17 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I will defer to the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole staff person, but before we do that, I just want to say for the benefit of our Planning Commission colleagues and the public, I want to compliment my CLIC colleagues on their personal agility. CLIC members were just informed today of the change in process to attend tonight's meeting, where in the past, primarily the Executive Committee members were asked to do so. So I just want to say thank you so much, CLIC members, for taking time, making time for this valuable public hearing tonight, and apologies for any inconvenience on this change in process. We're all being very agile and trying to adapt to the present circumstances, so Mr. Wes. Wes Durham.
Hi, yeah, so my name is Wes Durham, I'm a planner with Long Range Planning in Minneapolis, Department of Transit, and Economic Development. I'm just going to quickly introduce this item tonight. Typically dropped by. So this item is a.
It's hard to hear him.
Sorry, I'll try and speak a little louder.
So guys that have background noise, if you can mute your computer if you're talking, please.
Yeah.
So this item is a charter required joint public hearing between the Capital Long Range Improvements Committee and the City Planning Commission for the purposes of receiving public testimony, just capital budget requests, as part of the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Prior to opening the public hearing, typically, we have some introductory remarks from Chair Strand, just talking through the CLIC process, and as well as introductions of CLIC members and CLIC leadership that are present. Once any members of the public have spoken who are present and who would like to do so, and the public is hearing is closed, typically, the City Planning Commission takes some time to ask questions they may have of CLIC about the process and about particular proposals as well, and that will help inform location and design review of capital improvements under the Comprehensive Plan, which is an item that I'll be bringing before the Planning Commission on their next cycle at their May 27th Committee of the Whole meeting. Public Works staff are present, given that the lion's share of the proposed CBRs are from Public Works, and so they can answer questions as well. And then my final note is just that both the test, any testimony given today, as well as discussion after the public hearing, will be included in the CLIC report that is sent to the mayor later this summer. And will that all turn it back over to, well, to Chair Strand if you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Durham, and members in the public. So the Capital Long Range Improvements Committee is a 33-member resident advisory board to advise the mayor and city council on the capital budget and the six-year capital improvement program. By my reckoning, there are about 129 capital budget requests totaling approximately $1.364 billion for the six-year capital improvement program. The CLIC members are appointed by the mayor and council, but the CLIC purview is the range of capital improvement program requests, and so dealing with such entities as the Municipal Building Commission, or MBC, the Park and Recreation Board, the facilities, public grounds and facilities that is looked at, street paving, stormwater, sanitary sewer, the bicycle pedestrian bike pad, parking system, sidewalks, I said stormwater and sanitary, street paving, traffic control and safety, potable water, the water services, and the fleet. And if I have omitted anything, I'm sure the other CLIC leaders can fill in the gaps. CLIC is a fairly time-intensive board, let's say, we started our meetings on March 31st with an hour and a half orientation, and we've had regular meetings since April 7th, and we will finish the CLIC report on June 30th. And that is the annual deliverable, that is the key recommendations, both in terms of narrative comments, as well as the financial recommendations. So with that, I'd like to, if the committee will bear us just a few seconds, recognize the Vice Chair Willie Bridges, and our Task Force Transportation Chair John Bernstein, Vice Chair is Katie Jones, and Human Development Chair is Eric Wan, and Vice Chair Jocelyn Beard. I did ask if the Vice Chair of CLIC or the Task Force Chairs had, or Vice Chairs had any brief comments regarding their work this year?
No, I don't have anything to add.
I can speak briefly, this is John Bernstein, I'm the Transportation Task Force Chair. I guess I have two points. One, I want to make sure that there was some testimony that was forwarded to me by some citizens of the city that were not able to attend the meeting tonight, that I know that CLIC staff forwarded on to, I think it was Wesley, and I just want to confirm that that will be made part of the public record of this meeting.
We have received those comments that were submitted, and they'll be included in the written report that I mentioned. I'm not sure if there is anything more procedural that needs to be done. Sometimes we have them recognized formally in the record during the hearing once it's open.
Okay, confirm that, thank you. And then, I guess the only other thing I would point out, mainly for the public, is I think it's fantastic that we're continuing, this public thing has been done for many years, but CLIC is trying to expand the opportunities for the public to have input into what is a fairly opaque process for the average citizen. And one of the downfalls of that is that people come into this not having an understanding of what the timeline is, and sometimes have expectations that are, become disappointed. So the point I'd like to make is that this process starts with city departments in January, and they submit these budget requests that are over the next six years by the end of March, and we take until June, as Jeff pointed out, to consider them, and then that's forwarded to, that's advisory, and it's forwarded on to the mayor. So many of these projects are very large, so to the extent people show up to a public meeting and have projects that they want to see happen in their neighborhood, in all likelihood, it's too late for that to happen this year, but it's still really important that you're here and you will be heard, and it will be noted for future years, but I just like to point that out, manage expectations for people. Thanks.
Mr. Wan or Ms. Beard?
I have nothing to add, that's it.
Ms. Beard, Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I guess the one thing that I'd like to talk about is if there's any other support that, you know, the Planning Commission or others can give for us to continually to get feedback from particular departments on comments that we've made, I think that's kind of a continual frustration, and I know that's one that we've raised before, but just want to reiterate that, because I think it sometimes feels like a one-way dialogue, and it's good that we have these public spaces to be able to at least have that singular direction, but we do want it to continue, get to get feedback to make improvements, especially when, as I think John pointed out, that, you know, people are expecting results and expecting to have, you know, not just to say something, but to have their voices heard, and at least to know why something may not be happening at the speed that they want it to be. I know staff are juggling a lot of things, but just wanted to raise that.
Thank you, colleagues. So at that point, Vice President Olson, I'll say that I'm sad that our former CLIC member, President Esma Aley, could not attend, apparently, but we're all looking forward to seeing Raya again, and I'll just confirm with Mr. Harrison that we had, I believe, six total written or electronic mail comments that he had asked me to confirm, and then apparently, the City Planning Commission clerk staff will take over the public comment period. So thank you for, again, having CLIC at the Planning Commission, I think likely has happened since about 1956.
Thank you, guys, for coming. I know that President Asmiley was traveling today, otherwise, I'm sure she would have made sure to be here. So, Planning Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff or the representatives from the CLIC before we open it up to the public? I'm not seeing any. So I'll open the public hearing. I haven't done a public hearing yet, so we'll see how this works. I have written down a list of phone numbers that I, I'm not sure if they are people who have called in to comment, or if they're members of the CLIC, so I'm going to read off just the last four numbers, and if you are on the CLIC and you're not here to comment, just let us know. If you are a member of the public and you do want to make a comment, you can press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. So the first one is phone number ending in 4129. Is there someone here wishing to comment with phone number 4129? If so, press star six to unmute yourself.
This is Carol Ann Peterson. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, and I live at 3816 47th Avenue South, and I am here to comment on the request for the lining of the Dead End Water Main on the 3800 block of 47th Avenue South. And I believe there are three of us that are here to speak on this, and I would like to not be the first person to speak, I would like Jim Hagan to be the first person to speak.
All right, is there a Jim Hagan who would like to testify? You can press star six, state your name and address for the record. All right, we'll maybe come back to that. If someone with the phone number ending in 5686 would like to speak, you can go ahead now, press star six.
Hello, my name is Chris Lindy, my last four numbers on my telephone are 4597, was I called?
No, but you can go ahead, state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly, it's hard, my name is Chris Lindy, and my address is 421 Second Street Northeast in Minneapolis. And I am calling on behalf of the Great Northern Greenway Task Force, and I would like to make a comment personally about another project, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a side note, it's difficult when you're on this end when you hit star six, because then there's a voice that tells you that you've been muted, so then you miss some of the conversation. So just as far as, you know, dynamics of being on this end, that's what it's like, you don't hear some of the meeting when you're muting and unmuting, just add to the confusion.
Thank you.
But that said, I would like to speak on behalf of the Great Northern Greenway Task Force. I believe we did, I did send in a letter, this is about Project BP 006, 18th Avenue Northeast Trail Gap. If I could just, if you do not have that for the record, I could read it aloud, but if it has been submitted, I don't want to waste your time by reading this letter again.
I am not sure, Wes, do we have that?
We do have a letter, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, from the Great Northern Greenway, I haven't read it myself yet, but.
Yes, I do want to confirm that was one of the six comments referenced by a CLIC Chair Jeff Strand that had been submitted.
Okay, so we do have that.
Okay, so I will not spend the time talking about it, if that's okay.
Yep, did you have other comments?
Sure, yeah, I just have another comment, this is kind of personally, as a, just a resident not speaking on behalf of any group, talking about a future project, is Third Avenue Northeast, there is a trail that's in the public right-of-way that I believe was just added to the All Ages and Ability Network, and I believe that the city is taking over, they're including that trail that they weren't previously maintaining, or even claiming to have any maintenance rights to. I was just informed that the city will be taking over that responsibility, or be, have it in the realm to be looking for funds to take over the responsibility of maintenance of that trail. And just a brief background, this was a section of the city that was posed for, it was neighborhood revitalization in the 60s, and I 335 was scheduled to go right down Third Avenue. They displaced a large number of people, mostly immigrants, in this neighborhood during that time, and they also did a lot of massive teardowns for the interstate. Luckily, the interstate was stopped, I 35, I 335, but what was left was Third Avenue, devoid of anything else. So it was the plans back in the 70s and 80s to make this a greenway, the first greenway, and they did, they created it with these new townhomes that went up, about 1986 it was built, so it is in the public right-of-way, but it has not been maintained since it was built in 1986. I know that the Neighborhood St. Anthony West Neighborhood Association, which I'm not speaking on behalf of, but I am familiar with them, and I am on that board, but I'm only speaking as an individual, has been trying to get the city to maintain the trail, it's in very poor shape. So I'm just kind of bringing this up to CLIC for a future project, and future funding, perhaps. I think it would make an excellent safe routes to school project, as that there's Webster Community School, Webster Grade School just opened up on Fifth and, I believe, Fifth and Fifth, Fifth Avenue and Fifth Street, which is very close, adjacent to Third Avenue. So I would just like to make the CLIC aware of that, and that we would like to try to get things going on that as well. So that's my comment as an individual, and just to kind of go back to the comment of the Great Northern Greenway, I'm all for this BP 006 Trail Gap, which I've spoke on behalf of before, but also, there's a new project in the old city maintenance building, which is on Washington and 18th, between Washington and Jefferson, that the city does own, and we'd like to see that gap, which is currently a gap in the trail of the 18th Avenue Northeast Trail, to be filled in with a quality of bike facility, and since the city owns the property, we feel like it should be of decent quality, and the land use should not be too much trouble. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person, if your phone number ends in 5686, you can go ahead, press star six to unmute yourself. 5686, star six, unmute.
Oh, hi, this is.
This is Jim Hagan at 5686. Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It is kind of a strange star six system, anyway. My name is Jim Hagan. I live at 3817 47th Avenue South, and I'm calling about WTR12. That's about water distribution. And the situation is, we have a very severe water quality problem on our block. The problem is that the water main is, comes to a dead end at our block. Our block only has 13 houses, and it's no, it's not questioned that dead-end water mains are very substandard and should be avoided at all costs, but anyway, that's what we have. So, it needs to be flushed frequently, otherwise it is a health hazard because the water stagnates, and it creates problems with the disinfectants and things like that. That it's dead end also means that it has excessively high corrosion. So, you have the really high corrosion and really frequent flushing, and it washes a lot of sediment into our houses. The sediment gets into water heaters and shortens their lives, or makes them almost inoperative. It gets into dishwashers, washing machines. So, whenever there is a flushing action, which can be twice a week that often, then it may take like about a day before you have regular running water again that you can use. And you should not be using hot water right after one of these kinds of flushings, because it can destroy your water heater. So, anyway, this is the issue. And I thought it's interesting, this question about timing of wanting things to be done quickly, is, I understand that everybody would like that, but we have complained for years about this situation, the water, and routinely been told, oh, well, that's just how it is. You know, there's flushing, it could be for a fire being put out, or repairs, or something, and that's just, everybody has that. Well, in 2014, we found out that that is not the case. Not everybody is on a dead-end water main, so we have a much more severe case of bad quality water than the average resident of the city. The way you fix that, there's a couple things. The main thing is it needs to be replaced or lined. It's a 97-year-old cast iron water main that was poorly designed because it's dead end, means the water does not circulate. Anyway, one, the cheapest way to fix that is not replace it, but line it, a concrete liner, which at least will keep all of this iron from getting into our houses. We'd like that added to the project for WTR12. I don't quite understand WTR12 in that it doesn't actually give any projects, you know? So, I do know that there are different projects to reline water mains, and I don't know what all is planned for WTR12 for six years, but please, if you could include ours, we'd really be grateful, because it's very costly for us. And I guess the thing that really is troubling is, back in 2014, we talked to Steve Kotke, the Director of Public Works. In 2019, we submitted a petition of every single household on the block. That was to Mayor Frye and to Councilmember Andrew Johnson. The council member introduced us to Glenn Garrids, who was then the Director of Water, of the Water Division. He did a lot of sort of flow tests and analysis, and anyway, the end result was all you can do, that it just needs lining. Well, then come this year, we're trying to see what's going on, and the new director, Annika Baimston, tells us, no, you're not set for relining. I said, well, when are we? Well, there is no plan. The only plan that we're aware of is that if you have maybe seven to 10 miles of water mains lined per year, and we have 700 miles that need it, then basically, we're talking, it could be our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, who might finally see this fixed. So, we're rather disappointed that there's no priority schedule for this. And it leaves us with something really, really troubling this year. It's like we have three classes of residents of Minneapolis. You've got the people that live in nice condos downtown, they've got great water. Those water mains are in good shape, they have clean water and reliable water. You have a lot of people living in neighborhoods on old water mains that are cast iron, that have not been lined, but they're not dead end, so they do have rusty water sometimes. And then you have the class of residents like ourselves that are stuck with profoundly bad water, such that in some of our houses, it is impossible to get non-rusty water in the hot water systems, because the hot water heaters are contaminated, and you can't clean them out. So, anyway, it just seems, just seems unconscionable that we say, and the city website says that the city is responsible for delivering high-quality water. It does not. The website says we give clear water. We don't. It's not true for all of the residents, so we just would like this to work for us. And when we think of there being, say, $3 billion of capital improvements, I know there's lots of stuff that we all like there. I like bike trails, I like new light displays along the river, and parkways, and benches, all that stuff, but can't we at least offer water, decent water for people? We're all paying the same price. We all need water. We're not allowed to drill wells, so can't that please be a priority? So, thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, if your phone number ends in 1434, press star six to unmute yourself. 1434, press star six to unmute yourself. All right, maybe we'll come back to that one. If your phone number ends in 8223, you can press star six to unmute yourself. 8223.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Wendy Han.
Name and address for the record, and go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Wendy Han. I'm also calling about the dead-end water main. I live at 3824 47th Avenue South in Minneapolis, Ward 12. So, I live on the corner at the intersection of 47th and Dowling Street, and my house is located right next to the dead-end water main. After I purchased my house and moved in about 19 years ago, I noticed my bath water flowed dark orange, and I was really horrified. I immediately called the City Water Department to find out what the problem was, and they reassured me that it was very common in city water due to the old pipes, it was perfectly safe to drink. But it continued to flow orange, no matter how long I ran the bathtub, so I was not comfortable with this explanation, so I installed a reverse osmosis water filter, and my kitchen sink, just so I could have safe drinking water. But the filters, just within a couple months, they became clogged in a very short amount of time. They were supposed to last a year, so I had to replace those filters, and I decided to add an additional whole-house water filter down in my basement, in the pipes where the water comes in. Still, both systems require frequent filter changing, and it isn't very cheap to keep that going. But in addition to the toilets, bathtubs, sinks, all getting stained, my hot water heater has been compromised by this, these sediments, and it never runs clean. So, I basically take showers, but I don't take a hot bath, because it comes out orange, and my laundry gets stained if I wash white clothes and bedding. So, our block and neighbors has been complaining about this for quite a few years. I didn't realize, like Jim mentioned, until 2014, how bad it was. Makes me very uncomfortable to think about the fact that I've been using this water and drinking it for so long, and the problem still hasn't been properly addressed by the city. So, it's not just an equipment-damaging or aesthetic issue, it's also a health issue. And I think that we've been receiving the substandard water service for decades, and we're not being compensated for this by the city. I think everyone deserves clean drinking water. It's, water is life, and there are definitely deficiencies in our main that serves our neighborhood. So, please, we do implore you to include lining our water main in the Water Division's current capital request, WTR12. I know other people on my block actually don't drink their water, they just get bottled water, or they go to other springs and bring the water home, so I don't think that's really very fair to our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Up next is a phone number that ends in 8241.
I also want to say, so this is Katie Jones, but I know another caller had been trying to get on and couldn't unmute, and they are, I will have to give you their last four digits, but would you be able to unmute from your end?
Yes, I'm 8241.
All right. 8241, why don't you go ahead and write, or state your name and address for the record, and Katie, will, can you put the last four digits in the chat?
I'll try to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, 8241, you can go ahead.
Okay. My name is Gail Bonneville. I live at 3231 Pierce Street Northeast in Ward 1, and I would just like to briefly summarize my comments that were sent to you and discussed with the Click group last week. Just to reiterate that, I hope you did receive those, the longer version, but I am requesting that the long-overdue PV 157, or 33rd Avenue Northeast, be expedited on the road reconstruction schedule. It is currently slated for reconstruction in 2027. This means the roadway will be 20 years beyond its 40-year lifespan by the time it gets rehabbed. The roadway was originally set for reconstruction, along with the other Wake Park neighborhood concrete streets back in 2016. However, 33rd Avenue Northeast was abruptly pulled from that project back in 2016, when the city deemed the street was in such substandard condition that it was not feasible to be completed, along with the other adjacent streets. 33rd was by far the worst road in that batch. It often has been cited at neighborhood meetings, is needing immediate work, and unsolicited negative comments from visitors to my neighborhood as well. We were told that 33rd Avenue would be rehabbed later. I presumed that meant a couple years later, but here we are, five years later, and the road continues to degrade to the point where it has truly become a hazard to motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, with patch upon patch upon patch, year after year, continuing to fall apart. For some reason, the project now covers the entire mile of 33rd Avenue Northeast, from the city's eastern border at Stinson Boulevard, all the way over to Central Avenue Northeast. While this would be ideal, the city might be wise, for safety reasons, to divide the project in half and focus on the central to Johnson Street section, which is by far the worst portion of 33rd, if the city is unwilling to invest in the whole project. That might make it a little more palatable. The road at times has been what I consider nearly impassable, to the point where I either take a detour or weave from side to side around various pits and crevices on the wrong side of the street. And just finally, hopefully you can see that in the photos that I submitted, showing the severe degradation of this roadway. I sent a link with quite a number of photos, and then a shorter PDF to Mr. Durham this afternoon, so hopefully you can take a look at that, and hopefully we'll move this project up to a more recent time for rehabilitation. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. If your phone number ends in 7134, press star six to unmute yourself. Press star six, and make sure your phone is also unmuted.
Cheryl, Senator, it does not appear that there's anyone with that phone number currently in the call.
Okay. All right. Maybe we'll try one last time at the end. Let's go to phone number 4129. You can press star six to unmute yourself. All right, let's try one more. Phone number 1434.
This is, this is Carol Ann Peterson, 4129.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Okay. I was the first one that had come in, and then wanted my neighbor, Jim Hagan, to speak. And this is, again, about the request for lining of the dead-end water main on 3800 block of 47th Avenue South. And I just want to reiterate the city, the city's responsibility for delivering high-quality water for all its citizens, and we pay the same price, and there are extra water that everybody else does. And the action taken by the city, this constant flushing, while it has, you know, this, it's like, it looks like something is being done when you flush a water hydrant on the, on the corner of the street, and the avenue there at Dowling and 47th. It looks like an action is being taken, and something impressive is being done, and nothing impressive. There's no, there's no, it's ineffective, it's wasteful. And in fact, it creates additional problems that is left to us as the residents to resolve and pay for. So, there's a, there's an inequity here, and what I, what I get excited for, that I'm hopeful for, is that the city has an opportunity to make it right, to do better, to actually have a plan to correct this problem here, this block, and hear our voices, and know that we're not, I know that we are not the only dead-end water main in the city of Minneapolis, but we are the most vocal. So, know that, and, you know, please hear that our voices perhaps speak for people who don't have time to come to meetings, or write letters, or petition the mayor, or collect signatures. We took the time to do that. We have the collective consciousness and will to do that. So, my, I just really implore you to do the right thing. Start here. Start here and take the right steps. Water is the source of life for all living beings, and it needs to be that high-quality water that the city claims it is delivering. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see that phone number 7134 is back in the meeting, so if you want to unmute yourself, press star six. Oh, we heard you for a second there.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Oh, now we can hear you. State your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
This is Peter Schmidt. I live at 22nd and Bryant in the Lower Hill East neighborhood. My apologies. My apologies, I was on one four three four before and just could not get star six to do anything for me. So I do appreciate your persistence in letting me speak. So I submitted comments to the Click@Minneapolis MN.gov email. So there's a full set there that'll hopefully be included, but I did want to highlight three particular areas that I will pretty much always talk about given the opportunity. The first is BP zero zero three. This doesn't currently include the Cedar Lake Trail, but I would love to advocate for it for the future. I know this is, my understanding in the history is that the Midtown Greenway was originally not part of the repaving plans through Click and it was added through this process. And I'd like to do something similar with the Cedar Lake Trail. It's a great, it's a beautiful path. It brings a lot of people on it, but right now the Minneapolis portion of it is almost unridable. I end up just riding, sitting up so I can save my wrists a little bit. And then as soon as you cross into the suburbs, they've resurfaced it in the last five years and it's a lot nicer. And, you know, it's definitely well past time for Minneapolis to do that. So I would strongly advocate for that inclusion for BP zero zero three or for another bikeway maintenance request in the future. Again, it's a beautiful trail, especially with the Southwest LRT coming in. It's going to get a lot of traffic and definitely well past, well overdue for maintenance. The second piece I wanted to talk about is the Henepin Project, which is BP zero zero one, or well, it's PV one five eight, but I think it should be included in BP zero zero one as well, which is the Safe Roads to School Program. I know this project's already been approved and is in the final stages. What I wanted to advocate for here is not something that I think Click or the Planning Commission has done in the past, is that in this initial budget request, the money for Henepin was specifically earmarked for a project that would conform to the Transportation Action Plan, which would in turn require protected bike lanes. Right now, there's an option out there that is not including that element. And I think it would be great if Click and/or the Planning Commission submitted a letter on behalf of that project to ensure that it is meeting its stated application for budget. I know, again, this is a little bit unusual form for Click advocacy, but given that it was referenced in the initial budget request and reviewed on that budget request, I think it could be an important element for the Planning Commission and Click and/or Click to advocate to ensure that we have safe, accessible infrastructure for all user types on Henepin, and this would be a good way to enforce that. And then finally, again, the rest of my topics are covered in my letter, but I did want to bring up one final item under TR zero two two, and this is under traffic signals. And something I'd like to advocate for, again, I know this is a long-term process with Click, but I'd like to see Click and Public Works advocate for more piloting of pedestrian and bicycle friendly design in roads, specifically nearside signals, nearside traffic signals. By moving traffic signals to nearside, you can force vehicles to stay farther back out of the crosswalk in order to see the signal. Currently, this isn't allowed under the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. There is a comment period that closes later this week as a new iteration of this comes out for the first time since two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve. But right now Minneapolis has avenues to kind of get exemptions to that document, to pilot these kind of different safety initiatives, but is, for whatever reason, you know, not choosing to do so right now. But I think, given that Minneapolis is so focused with Vision Zero and the Transportation Action Plan on promoting this, you know, more alternative forms of transportation other than driving, it's important that their infrastructure also supports that. You know, part of that is obviously my advocacy on bike lanes. Part of it is just designing roads and infrastructure to prioritize users other than vehicles. And things like nearside signals, like diverters, like chicanes, really can facilitate a more pleasant walking, rolling, biking experience. And if the city is going to get to its goals of hitting, you know, thirty to fifty percent, you know, bikers, walkers, transit users, it's really going to need to improve the experience for those users. And right now, our traffic signals and our road designs don't really facilitate that. So again, under TR zero two two, I would love to see an advocacy for more innovative transit pedestrian and bike oriented road design elements that go beyond, you know, just removing parking or narrowing roads, but also can talk about signal design, which is usually kind of different departments talking to each other. So that coordination, I just think really needs to happen. And just specifically, I would love to plug nearside signals. So those are the three elements I wanted to plug tonight. Again, I submitted a letter to the Click email address that will hopefully be included in the overall report, and I encourage you to look at the remaining items on there. I didn't want us to have too much time on this call, but those are the three elements I wanted to emphasize tonight. And thank you so much for your time and for sticking with me on the star six piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any other callers on the list, but I will open it up now. If anyone has called in to speak and has not done so, you can go ahead now. Press star six to unmute yourself. All right. I am not seeing or hearing anyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions for staff or for the Click? Commissioner Caprini?
Thank you, President Olson. I just wanted to, for the record, let the commission know that I have been here since six twenty five. I had some login issues and to get to my email, so I apologize for that, but this was just for the record. But this has been an amazing conversation because I too struggle with some brown water once in a while, like probably maybe three times a year. Now I'm thinking about when does that happen? So I'm excited to hear what other commissioners have to say about this. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Ford, did I hear you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. And my chat thing is not working well, so I have to interrupt verbally. I was wondering if there are any Public Works staff here who can respond to the issue of the dead end water main or whatever it's properly called? And the three or four comments that we heard this evening, is there someone on the staff that can respond to what sounds like a very horrible, horrible situation?
Good evening, Click Council Commissioner Olson. My name's Liz Hayman. I'm with Transportation Planning and Programming at Public Works. Unfortunately, we do not have someone here from the Water Department tonight, but we have been taking notes and I believe that has been submitted for the record. And so my colleagues in the Water Department will be receiving those comments and can respond in the best way back to the commission. If there's any, you know, questions about how to get back to folks, we'd be happy to, you know, take your advice on how to get back to you.
Well, I, thank you. I'm, I haven't been involved with Click for like fifty years, so I don't know the process anymore. But is it appropriate for the Planning Commission to make a comment about this situation in a formal way to the council?
Commissioner Ford, we're not taking any formal action tonight, but any comments that you make will be in the record. So I would encourage you to do that.
So the commission itself does not make any comments as a commission?
Not as a whole, but as commissioners, you could.
Well, then I'd like to just add my voice to. I understand this is all kinds of projects and all kinds of priorities and competing concerns, but it does seem to me that years and years and years of having what seems to be unpotable water in this day and age in the city of Minneapolis is pretty outrageous. And I think it should be a priority, and I would urge the city council to look at making whatever adjustments or whatever assignments might be necessary under that proposed budget. I think it's just, it must, it should be a priority. People should not be living like this.
Chair Strand, did you want to make a comment?
I do just want to make note, Vice President Olson and Commissioner Ford, and it probably wasn't fifty years ago, was it Commissioner Ford? But I've only been active like twenty five, so you must have been there with my predecessors. I do want to point out for the record, and I'm sure Mr. Brandt wants to comment, but the Director of Water Treatment and Distribution Services did send Click a three-page letter. So our staff, I'm sure, could share that with the planning commissioners. It's from Annika Bankston, May fifth, two thousand and twenty one, and I anticipate that part of our written report, I'm pretty confident there will be a written comment concerning the dead end water mains and the rusty water issue. And I suspect that other Click colleagues want to speak to that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marwa, do you have a question? Commissioner Marwa, do you want to ask? Oh, go ahead.
No, I just also wanted to state for the record that I was here. I apologize for the delay. I also think, I agree with Commissioner Ford about this, too, about potable water. I did not know that and was kind of atrocious with the infrastructure bill that's coming and all that we're talking about. I hope that something that can be included as well. I think a lot of that, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner LaTrow, did you have something to say? Rich LaTrow, I see a hand raised.
That's probably Rich LaRoe, is that me?
Yes, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus here with Commissioner Ford. You know, we've been given a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty projects to rank due to the process, and I apologize, this is my first year on the committee, so I don't know precisely how everything works. But, you know, talking about which park gets, you know, which bit of grass here and which, you know, neighborhood gets a bike path there, I think issues like unpassable roads and undrinkable water, we need to find some way to push that to the top and make those both critical and high priority. I've been a little concerned about the grading of our projects and how everything sort of rises at the top. So at that point, it becomes hard to grade anything against anything else. So I implore my colleagues to help me in determining how it is we can take, you know, two of these really most high priority issues and really push them hard to the city council and these committees to make them top priority and not get swept under for future discussion.
Thank you. I'm seeing S. Brandt, fifty one. Did you have a comment? I'm sorry, I don't know what your name is.
That's fine. I'm Steve Brandt, and I want to reinforce what Chair Strand and Mr. LaRoe just said. Several of us have been in a dialogue with Mr. Hagan for a couple of months now on this issue, and the department has responded. I strongly believe, based on what we heard tonight, which put it in real human terms, that the department's response was insufficient to address the hardship that these neighbors are going through. And I'm sure we'll have a comment. We're just debating right now what that comment will be.
Thank you. John Bernstein?
This is John Bernstein, and me, again, the Chair of the Transportation Task Force. This particular issue around water falls under the purview of my task force. And as Steve mentioned, we, I and many others on the committee have been contacted by several of the residents that have spoken this evening. I too want to voice my support for this problem. I also want to try to put it into context a little bit. This is a, not a simple issue, as I understand it. Jim Hagan has shared a lot of information with me on this, including a map that shows all of the dead end water mains around the city. There's something like five hundred of them. His block has been very vocal about this, and that's a good thing, as one of those residents pointed out, because they're a voice for all of these people, not just their own block. And many of them have acknowledged that fact. Having said that, this isn't simple, right? There's five hundred of these. There's limited resources for the whole city, let alone just for this, with five hundred of these, whether you're talking about time or money. So one of the things we're going to ask of, we actually have asked already, of the Water Department, and this should go for every city department when it comes to capital projects, is first of all, that they conduct an inventory, so they know what they've got and what condition it's in. Fortunately, the Water Department is in the midst of that. They're about halfway through, is what we've been told. It's a little shocking that that hasn't been done previously, but since the current head of that department is new, I don't think she's the person to pin that blame on. Secondly, I think they need to have a clear set of criteria that they use when they're assessing that inventory about what's next and how and why. And then thirdly, would be a plan to get through something like the five hundred dead end water mains around the city. Just to piggyback on what Jeff Strand said, we did get a response from Annika Bankston. I guess I would characterize that response as putting the best face on this problem. And that, not to suggest that there was anything inaccurate about it, it could be that there's some dead end water mains that aren't quite as bad as the one that's been described to us tonight. And one of the differences that's been pointed out by some of these residents is the number of houses that are on this particular dead end water main is, are about half of what's normally on a dead end water main. And so that means the water is even more stagnant because there's not as many houses drying off that main. So it could be that this is one that ought to rise to the top or any other like this. But the, my point is simply, this is not black and white. It's pretty gray, right? Some places, it really might just be a watercolor problem that happens a couple of times a year versus an ongoing problem. To me, this is clearly an equity issue, probably not what the city imagined when they established equity as a priority, but it's unquestionably an equity issue. And if you look at the map of where the dead end water mains are, they're all over the city. They're not concentrated in any particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Wan?
Hi, Eric Wan here. I'm the Chair of the Human Development Task Force in Click. I would, I would echo what John just stated, and also for the record, we do have someone here from Public Works. In last year's Click comments, we asked the Public Works Department to work with citizens to establish a thirty-year infrastructure plan. I think part of it is to acknowledge what the problems are, and the second is to let people know where they are, where they are in the queue. One of the speakers noted that her, the problem on her road gets put back years and years and years, and she has no idea where it is in the queue at the moment. If there were an infrastructure plan, as Click suggested last year, there would be a more systematic way for residents to know what's happening and when they can expect service. So that's my comment.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more raised hands or comments. Wes, I'm wondering if you can just quickly tell us what the difference in feedback you're looking for is between today, when you bring this to us, and next cycle, when you are bringing to us, it sounds like more detail.
Yeah, so the item that I'll be bringing in next cycle on the twenty seventh is called Location and Design Review. I know a decent amount of the commission is new and so hasn't seen this before. That item is that we're required to review new capital, proposed capital improvements. We're required to review them under the comprehensive plan, much like a land sale. It's basically the same thing, but just with a different content item. And so that is the item that'll be taking place on that next cycle, is reviewing those capital improvements that haven't already received that approval. So there's a set that weren't on the CIP last year that are this year, and so those are the ones that will need that review. are the ones that will need that review. And so it'll be reviewing those for conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, and so we'll take formal action on those? Yeah, okay. Great. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, well, we can wrap up this item then. Thank you to the Click and for all the work that you guys are doing. I know this is a big project every year, so thank you. All right. I don't think we have Kimberly with us tonight, but I'm wondering if there's any staff on who have updates for us? Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other items you would like to bring before us before we adjourn? All right. If not, and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, May 27, 2021, and our next Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, May 24, 2021. And I will turn it over to Chair Strand to adjourn their meeting as well.
Thank you, Vice President Olson. So I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. Seeing none, if not, and without objection, I'll declare the Click meeting adjourned. The next Click meeting is Wednesday, May 26, 2021, noon to 1:30, or noon to 2:00. Thank you.
Good night.